Got four or five cars in the yard. You want to call me and say, hey, I need to run a business out here. What do I do about it? Well, we have the business license. We can tell these people, look, you're able to operate a business within these guidelines, within this parameter. And that's what we're trying to avoid. We're having to deal with quite a few people out there that are saying, ah, we're just doing this as part-time business. It's still business, whether it's as a hobby or you're making money. But the neighbor next door who's having to listen to woodworking machines or mechanic impact or anything of that nature is having an issue with it. They don't want to come home after a hard day at work unless they're to the neighbor next door having to deal with him making some extra money. And that's what we're trying to avoid here. And that's why I think the business license is a big idea. Because then we could say, hey, this guy's running a business out of his house in a residential area, let's give him, at least give him some parameters before he can operate this and not disturb the neighborhood.
So, so we're only going to enforce it for the people that, like you said, that come to the county for a permit or something, or the neighbor next door complains. Here's, here's, I, I've got some issues with it. I, I just, I just want to just lay it out. There are, there are certainly some positive outcomes. Uh, you know, if, if you have, uh, now, now, let me state this first. I've got a business license. It's with the city. This has nothing to do with my business. I'm, I'm going to continue to have my business license. And I'm going to tell you why. I have to have a business license because if I go to Bibb County to go put in an air conditioner, they're going to say, pull a permit. When I get ready to pull a permit, they're going to say, where is your business license? And they've got you. You're going to, you're going to have a business license. Oh, I have to have it in Bibb County, but I have to have a business license. Um, so there's, there are some, there are some, you know, uh, safety, safety of, of people that are, if you've got a walk-in business and people are coming into your business, then, uh, you know, we're responsible for safety and health. And I don't want a walk-in business that's unsafe. I don't want somebody to be able to walk in and get hurt. Matter of fact, the person that's owning the business should, should feel the same way because it's, it's one call, that's all, and, and, and you're sued, you know? So, so I can see, you know, some potential positive benefit to it, but I have some negative things that, but I do have some solutions, so I'll just throw it out. First, negative, only the bona fide legitimate businesses that are committed to doing a good job at a fair price, they're the ones that's going to get a license. The ones that, like John said, are unscrupulous and are going to, are going to screw you over and, and, and put half your roof on and take the other half of your money and head to the next county and get out of the way, they're not going to get a business license. So, that's one problem I have. The only ones we're going to attack is the ones that are legitimate to begin with. Second, the money generated from such a license will not be used to ensure good legitimate business, businesses are protected against having to compete with these marginal fly-by-night businesses. I've got, again, I told you, I've got a business license. I've got a heating and air license. I do things by the book. I had to compete day-to-day with people, fly-by-night, don't have a license, get free on, off the internet, and, and I had to compete with them. So, if you're not going, Jeff, if you're not going out there and finding all of them and saying, every one of you that's got a business, I am going to hunt you down and you're going to have a business license, then you're putting me on an unlevel playing field. You're making me pay an extra hundred and twenty-five dollars because I'm going to be legitimate. And the guy that lives two houses down from me is going to charge fifty dollars less for the same service call because he doesn't provide insurance, he doesn't take care of his employees, and he's a chuck in a truck, is what we call them. And that's, that's exactly what they are, so.
He's being a clown.
And, and, and he's got to be found out and fined. Number three, which continues to lead to, Jeff, we put a law on the books without providing the manpower to visit for safety assurance purposes, uh, businesses who don't get a license, nor do we provide the manpower to identify and enforce compliance on those that just simply ignore the new law. And fundamentally, one of the last things that I have a problem with is this. We say, come to Monroe County, we want you to bring your business to Monroe County. And what we're going to give you for it is a hundred and twenty-five dollar bill, and we're not going to give you anything in return. And I have a problem with that. Don't charge me money and not give me anything in return. So, here's my solutions. First, insist that any business doing business with Monroe County government be properly licensed in some city or county. I can tell you that there are people that do work for Monroe County that don't have a business license. I can, I can tell you that happens. If we're going to be so, um, admin that we're going to require a business license, and anybody that does work, Ray, for this county that, that you called, I want them to have a business license somewhere. I, the reason I know that they don't is because I called, uh, I called the purchasing department. I said, is everybody that work, that, that, all our suppliers, do they have a business license? Oh, yeah, they have insurance. We were, we require W-9, we, we require them to have insurance. And I said, okay. So, hung up the phone and I called Greg. I said, Greg, you're an insurance guy. If somebody wants to get insurance, do you make sure they got a business license? He says, heck no, I write the policy.
That's right.
So, it's not, it, it's, it's, they don't necessarily have a business license. So, I'm saying, if we're a county that wants to, to require people to have business licenses, then if you're going to work for this county, you're going to have a business license, if you're going to do any work for our county. Next, insist that any contractor or subcontractor doing business that requires a permit or affidavit, like I have to do when I put in a heating and air unit, uh, through our building department or our health department, be licensed in some city or county. That doesn't mean they have to be licensed in Monroe County. They can be licensed in Bibb County. It's not fair to say you have to be licensed in Monroe County. Yes, I put in air conditioners, but Bucky Holland has a business in Bibb County, and he may come here and put in an air conditioner. And I don't want to tell the citizen that they have to use somebody from Monroe County. You have, you should have the right to choose who you want to do your work. Next, hire or identify with the current labor pool, so we've got to look at our current labor pool, the necessary labor to inspect each business location for a safe environment because I think it's important. If you're going to have people come into your business, walk in your front door, it needs to be safe. It needs to be safe. That's the say, that's our fundamental job here as commissioners. I want to be able to regularly ride and identify those businesses providing goods or services without proper license. In other words, Jeff, I want you to go down Highway 74, and if you see a business there, I want you to make sure they got a license. If you don't, I want you to rap on the door and say, hey, you need a business license. I, I, I want, I want to make sure that these guys are compliant. Everybody is compliant. It's only fair. And finally, I'd like to create and maintain a, an up-to-date database on the county website, all legitimate businesses that have submitted all the necessary documentation, which is a lot. I, I would, man, it's several pages long of what we're going to require them to do. Uh, and I want to see, I, I'd like to have that database and have it open for people in this county to know this business is licensed and, 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 uh, they are a good business in Monroe County for you to do business with. In my, I had a lady last night ask me, uh, asked my advice on somebody to refinish a floor. People, people in Monroe County have those questions. There was somebody on Facebook the other day asking, uh, how to, uh, what can I get, who can I get to do this? Who can I get to do that? Well, if we had that on our website, had a, had a database of those businesses, I know this kind of bleeds over into Chamber of Commerce, but fact is, we're the ones that's requiring a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Chamber says you can pay it or not, but, but if, you know, if you're, if you're going to demand it, then, then, uh, I think that is in some way being able to give back to the good businesses that decided to follow the law. There you go.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Rowland. Anybody else?
Well, some of the things that he's stated though, just like him going out to chase down one, if we don't require a business license, he can't go out there and give a ticket if they don't have one.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, uh, we've not had business license voted into the county because of some of the things he just mentioned, and I mentioned them also, the enforceability on it. Who's going to enforce it? Will it be enforced upon everybody? And, and, uh, getting down to the technicalities. So, we said it was an option. You've got the option to get a business license in Monroe County if you like. If you don't, that's fine, but that's it. Enforceability and those, like, it's been mentioned that those businesses that are supposed to be legitimate, they, some of them have been, not all of them legitimate, they just may have business license and still ripping off some people, but generally, that may be, that may be the case. But what I'm saying is, we have hundreds of small, little old contractors, and we said, who's going to enforce it? We've got people here that bill, hey, they may not bill but a thousand bills or, hey, in a year's time, you know, and, uh, may not bill but two hundred next year, but they're going to be required to get a business license. You've got, I know people that, that have little tractors. We have some employees in the past, especially in the fire, fire department, they've got little tractors and things that, that, uh, that do small jobs and whatnot, uh, stump removals and stuff. They've got to have that same license. Who going to do it? We can't depend on our code enforcement officer to go around and pick up all of this. That's why it hadn't been done. So, uh, uh, we've given the option, and most of the people come up, they say, well, I had no problem with it, you know? But the people come up that's new to Monroe County, they say, well, you mean to say you all don't have a business license? I tell them, yeah, we got them, but that's an option. If the, if the people want to do it, that's fine. If they don't, we work with them.
Yeah, I, I think another thing that, uh, these, like, just like City of Forsyth and these other counties require, I believe Matt, our fire chief back there, will say that it's nice for him to know what visitor in the county, what kind of responses he's giving to these fire calls. That's another reason they have stuff like that. I don't want to, I don't think we're out to make money on them, but I think a business license would be needed, but not, I don't like those fees there because it restricts a mom and pop paying the same thing like five below or somebody like that would pay.
Okay. That was your point about going to the employee side of, put the employee numbers.
Our zoning officer had them.
Okay. Kelsey, Ms. Ford, please come on up. And I've got a question for you, but go ahead.
Okay. Um, first of all, I wanted to say, to play off what you said with Matt, that's definitely true. Mr. Benjus and I have a bad actual notification about hazardous materials or anything like that, so that if they do get called, they'll know what they're lying to. Um, I was going to say, um, I was going to say with what Deputy Wilson brought up about living in River Forest and everybody else, that sort of thing, even if they were to come to me and say, hey, I need a business license, I'd ask, where are you at? River Forest? Because you're about to get a conditional use. So, they're going to have to go through zoning, they're going to have to change everything, or they're going to have to put their business somewhere else. Unfortunately, and unfortunately, majority of my calls a day are people telling me. So, those people that don't have a business license, they're probably going to get told. So, it's a field of this. I send Jeff out or I go look at it, and they are, and they have their cabinets along the road or sale. I get, when I do get calls about people saying, hey, I need to look up somebody, see if they have a business license because they did such and such and they left. And you're right, they do get angry because I don't have that information. Um, I told them they can go to State Secretary's there or something like that. The website thing is an excellent idea, and Mr. Benjus talked about that too. We can talk about putting a portal where they can actually just renew online. You don't have to come in here. So, that would help with that. And.
So, we've got, we've got two questions, actually. One, uh, do, are you currently handling, handling the optional licenses? And how many current optional licenses do we, have we sold?
A hundred and sixty-eight.
At what cost?
Fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars is the current cost. And so, to, so what you're saying is, if we implement this, we're looking at probably only adding another hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty to get to three hundred because that's kind of the average between Jones and Butts County. You've already got a hundred and some odd, and so if you do an extra, if you get up to that number, go ahead.
Sorry. In every year, it fluctuates because I have people that come in and they're like, oh, I forgot to do them for the past two years.
Sure. Um, the, um, and fifty dollars was the amount. And then the, my other question had to do, was kind of along the lines of what Larry was talking about, if you, if you implement this and, and what kind of workload, and do you have to hire more, somebody else and things like that? Um, if you're already doing a hundred and sixty-something and you're handling that every year, I mean, it doesn't seem like there's be that much more workload to, to add another hundred and some odd. Um, so you're not estimating a huge amount of workload increase?
There probably, honestly, I think there probably will be. Um, I'm not afraid of that.
Okay.
Um, I, I mean, I can handle it. If I can't handle it, I'm not too proud to go to Mr. Benjus and say, this is too much.
Okay. But the rest of the story, though, is if we assume a fifty-dollar amount, right now, that's what we're charging. If we stay with that, fifty dollars, and we get an extra hundred, you're only talking about five thousand extra dollars. If we have to bring somebody else on, even at part-time, that's, you know, I don't know, it may defeat purpose. But I am appreciative of the, one of the biggest things I'm in favor of is the safety factor of it. If someone's reloading ammo and they've got black powder in there, and, you know, the, the firefighters need to know it if there's a fire, you know, about to happen. But I don't know that we have that many reloaders, but anyway.
I don't want to look at it as, as a revenue generator. I really don't.
Right, right.
I mean, if you're, if you're going to take money from these businesses, then you put money back into something that either eliminates the people that I'm having to compete with that are unscrupulous and get them out, provide for the safety of our county, and yeah, put us on a website and says, hey, this is a good legitimate business that has a business license. Give me something.
Okay.
How, how would this affect, like, Joe Blow's electrical service in a residential area that's already there at work?
I can't say for sure, but I feel pretty confident that almost all of the electricians have business license in Monroe County. The reason why I say that is because I have quite a few of those and farmers. They come to me and they say that their business name can't get a checking account without a business license. I'm going to go to another county to force them into business.
I guess I missed stating my question.
Oh, I see.
We've got, we've got, we've got a problem in a subdivision right now where there's electrical companies operating out of it, running five or six vehicles a day, tractor-trailers in there and everything. If we require them to have a business license, that still would, would not give us any enforcement stopping it, would it, Jeff?
No, but he would have the parameters, or if he didn't have tractor-trails, then if any of the parameters were violated, it would be fine.
Okay.
And in a residential area, that's not permitted anyway, so.
But there's nothing we can do to it right now.
With this license, we, we don't have any.
Yeah, we have no, no law enforcement armor right now.
I would tell them, if you're coming and going home, that's fine, but when you've got your five workers coming and going, then move to, in the country zoning or live at work.
Go, go ahead, Sarah.
Off of that, the enforcement of that really is kind of the zoning question. The business license adds an extra step of control, but right now, this issue could be solved without business license, just by kind of the enforcement of the zoning code. Um, so that's, shouldn't be there right now.
Now, would there be any grandfathering of existing businesses in these situations?
Do they pay renewal fee or no?
Yeah, well, yes, so, it's fifty dollars.
Every year?
And it just goes from January to December. I don't send out notices or anything because they're not required, if they were required.
Let me ask a question. I, I'm trying to be impartial about this and make sure that we don't just, you know, that we really think through it and that there's a benefit, you know, to, to us and also to, well, when I say us, I mean to the, to the county's well-being. Um, but, you know, when I, when I Googled, you know, why, why are we required to have business licenses, you know, and just trying to get some actual benefit, you know, there's three things that I've, I've found on this one, um, this one site, and it, it says, licenses are required for three main purposes. To identify your business and make sure you are accountable for your actions. So, I don't know, by having a license, how, I mean, how, how is anybody more accountable for their actions by having a license or not having a license?
Well, they'd follow the parameters of the, of what Jeff was talking about.
Okay, so, so there's, there's some, there's some benefit there for sure, I guess. Uh, to protect public health and safety. So, help, tell me, like, in a nutshell, how are, how are these going to protect public health and safety?
From our perspective, the public health and safety is knowing where your business is located, about how many employees that they have, so in case there is an emergency fire or whatnot, that, that, the fire department and responders have that information ready as soon as that they are at that location. Um, and they're not just having to make guesses about what's happening here, who are we missing and so forth.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, for the, you know, I know a lady who runs a pretty good-sized company, doesn't have any employees working in her home. She operates out of her home in River Forest, you know, and, and her company's a national company, you know? Anybody she employs is remote. So, you know, is there a reason for, for that type, I mean, for that type of person to have to have a business license? Okay, so.
Well, if you've got people coming and going from your residence, would.
Would you have to have, so, so we, we'd have to put some kind of exclusion or something like that? Or a farmer who runs his business through an LLC, but he lives on his property, farms his property, is that, are they going to have to have a business, business license?
No. Agriculture is not.
No, there's part of it.
You got that limited out? Okay.
Agribusiness, yeah, but that would be, that would be selling farm equipment. But if, but a farmer doesn't have to have a business license, am I correct?
That's right.
Okay. Um, and the last one was to keep track of your finances. Anyway, that was more of a personal thing, but to keep track of your finances for tax purposes. Anyway, so, I, I guess I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm still trying to, like, fully recognize the, the benefit, you know, um, to the county. I don't know, I, I wish I could, I could hear a little bit more perspective on it from some folks and, and, uh, before we had to make a decision, but, um.
Well, we don't have to, I mean, we can make the, you've got the motion in the, in the second.
Everybody else is doing it, right? So, there's, there's the, there's the, do we do, just do it just because everybody else is doing it?
Just because it sounds progressive.
I mean, you know, I, I don't know that, that that's enough. I mean, you know, we're a conservative county and the, and the, the big base of our constituents want to know, you know, if we're going to be charging something more, they want to know what they're getting for their money, and I don't blame them, so, um.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against it, I just, I'm not a hundred percent convinced yet.
Well, we've got a motion right now, either to approve or not approve them, or to approve them, and then we'll see if that motion passes.
I think Jeff had something to say for me.
Well, no, I think Eddie's right. I mean, we're not trying to generate revenue. I mean, obviously, you've got resources right here for me and Kelsey, we're typically doing color red. Like, I'm going out there and violating behalf of D. She's having to do zoning issues on council places. I mean, the resources are there, we're not trying to generate revenue off of it, but it would help in the fire department situation, the, uh, police or the sheriff's department situation, you know? You've got, blame just go out there and say, hey, this person did this, he lives here. And the zoning issue, I mean, yeah, we'd have to pay and cover some of that, but you're not going to put serious money on it. But it would help us, hey, in a lock situation, especially if we put those parameters on it. And there again, if you're running that other website, it would help other counties, because those who wanted to do one comply, it would help them in their business.
I want a, one other question, too. We talked about the safety issue and making that information available to the sheriff's department and to the, and the firing MS. Right now, are we able to do that? Do we, do we currently have the ability? We've got a hundred and sixty-eight optional business licenses. Do, do they have immediate access, electronic access? Are we going to have to, are we going to spend more money to make that accessible to them?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jim.
We have in the Edmunds financial system, you've already purchased the module, business licenses. So, it's simple to allow anybody to log into that license that wants to look at it, see what's there.
Okay, and, and so, ultimately, again, back to the safety question, you've got a fire at 123 Main Street. Is he, while he's driving out there, is, is Chief Perry going to be able to access that, you know?
Are they going to know he's got acetone in there?
Right, and, you know, or black powder, or whatever, you know, whatever it is, I was, you know, concerned, I don't know about that.
I think it would be easier to download.
Oh, right, right, and have it on, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Have that.
Okay, I got it. But you understand, I mean, that's just a one other cost of, of implementing this, this process.
I do think we could do this completely online. My guess is you could, you could have the entire system online, and we could have, if people call and ask about it, you say, here's the website, you go to, have an affidavit questionnaire on there, you know, one of the questions is, do you have, do you handle, you know?
Hazardous.
Hazardous materials, you know, upload your safety data sheets for each one of those materials right here, and then here's, boom, here's a place where you pay. And then, as far as, like, you know, immediately, we could, we could start doing where anybody that comes in to pull a building permit, they go to the health department, you know, for something to pull a, uh, whatever. I mean, anybody, any business done for the county, like Eddie was saying, you know, uh, you, you got to show us your, your, your business license. So, of course, I mean, we might ought to make anybody that does business with the county buy a Monroe County business license. You know, I mean, and, and, and just a, just a thought. So, I like Eddie's idea of providing some value back to the people that decide to, not decide, I guess if we, if we do it, they'll have to do it, but, you know, having a list of, of, of Monroe County companies and their contact information and kind of like the Chamber does to help spread the word about businesses in the area, you know, you're kind of providing a little bit of a value there. Personally, I, I already, my business is in the city of Forsyth. I have an office in Macon, and I, I have to pay them both, you know? So, I'm used to it, and, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure what I get for it, uh, but, uh, other than the, the, the fire department does know, I mean, they, they do typically come out and inspect, you know, when you, when you do a business license, that's kind of like the next, actually, before it's even approved in Bibb County, they come and inspect and they do, you know, um, but now, now, the other part that they do is they actually will tax your assets in your office.
Right.
So, um.
Property tax.
And, and personally, that makes my blood boil, just going to be honest with you. Um, I, I don't feel like I'm for that in this county right now. I mean, definitely, probably at all, but.
I agree.
It, it, to me, it's, it's, uh, you know, it's just, it's just too overkill. But they come in, they make, they make, they check that you got, you know, proper fire exits, and they, they custom themselves to the, to the area and all that stuff. So, I do see some benefit there. Um, and I, I'd be for it as long as I knew that, uh, as long as I knew that it wouldn't cost the county more than, than we potentially could, could take in, you know? That's my biggest other concern.
All right. We've had plenty of discussion about it, but I think it's time to call the question unless someone wants to make an amendment about the fees on it.
Let me, let me throw one thing in there. What if we did five hundred dollars for, for companies with thirty-five or more employees and like that for?
We didn't, what was our fee for the other?
Fifty.
That we, is that was part of your motion?
No, no, I mean, that's what you said we're charging.
That's what we're charging now, but, you know, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I like that City of Forsyth or, or the other county that had a, uh, federal employees.
You like the employee, the, the six to one, half dozen the other. For me, I, you know, depending on the fee amount is, is kind of where I'm going to break out on this as a side note, but, um, so, we've got a motion to approve in a second. We got a motion from Commissioner Mommy in a second. Oh, Sarah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So, we've had a lot of discussion about enforcement of this, and right now, in the current ordinance, it is very much in this voluntary situation. I'm not sure that you all want to make a vote today until we explore a little bit more of enforcement side of things.
Well, we've got a motion in a second, and so, and depending on what they want to do, they can, you know, they can withdraw or, um.
I suggest you withdraw it and also allow the public to come in prior to voting on it. You've got public business people, that one live in my district right there, and the other one just moved out a few years ago, and they're small business people. I think we should have public input, and like I said, there's a reason. I explained the reason.
I agree with that.
We didn't, we hadn't implemented it. You know, and when this was introduced to you a month or so ago, it said that this would be an additional revenue source, and that was, that was something. I want public, I want the public.
Commissioner Mommy, you made the motion, what's your pleasure?
I'm a withdraw, and, and then I'll motion that we table this item.
Until we get more information. Well, there's no, there's no need to table it, I mean, it just, we just don't make any action on it.
There you go.
How do we, I mean, do we want to formally try to accumulate some, you know, we just want to...
Are we looking for a third? They're already, they're, they've already got the enforcement on their...
I'm talking about from our community, like, I want to hear, I want to, I actually agree with Larry on that, I want to...
Public comments.
Maybe we'll have some today, if these guys will hang around long, if we can get done with it.
They'll give you the opinion, go for it.
I see them gearing up.
All right, but you were drawing your motion, so we don't have a motion on the table of it, on it. We could, we could just continue to discuss this and set up a public hearing or whatever y'all want to do on that, that's fine, but right now, there's no further action to take on the business licenses, other than getting the information on the enforcement from, from you, and we'll let y'all know when we're, when we're bringing it back up on the agenda. Thank you all so much for your information input. Yep. All right, next item on the agenda is the Hubbard Dorm. Jim, you, Jim, is this you and Ray?
I invited Ray to come up. He brought to my attention that as we move forward with the Hubbard Dorm, getting it ready for occupancy, there's water in the basement, and it has migrated into the brick walls, accumulated several places within the basement. And the first thing you notice when you walk in, there's, there's a smell of either mold or, or mildew. Ray has gone out and obtained three bids, they're included in your packet. Two of those bids are for an internal French drain system. The preferred one, one that's recommended by Ray, well, it's a lot more expensive, is an external French drain system. So Ray, I'll, I'll let you speak to this. If you need a copy of it, I've got it right here.
Well, mainly the, the two inside of French drains is that it puts up on the wall to keep the water back in between there. But the third one that's more expensive is going to be where they're going to come in, excavate the dirt, clean up the walls, patch them. The two coats of waterproof are on there, put a French drain system outside below Ray, drain it into a basin, pump it out, then they're going to put a little swell around the upper side of the building to prefer the water. And that way there, that should take care of that issue. It's more money, but I think that's a problem.
But we're attacking it from the outside of the building versus the inside of it.
If we drive that from the inside, it's, that's not a good, it's a little bad.
Well, actually, they guarantee it, some of the companies. You didn't get one from Aquaguard. Aquaguard is the most notable, that, that do the inside drains, they guarantee the results.
Yeah, I'm worried about the inside, though, it's going to be still seeping through the block and the mortar over time is going to, you know, deteriorate.